Call me tomorrow, please.
United States of America, the community of which expands, one nation, one rock, individual, everybody in justice.
Mr. Jim.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Scapora. Mr. Boldnary. Mr. Porish.
Here.
Mayor Griffin.
Present.
For president. I have the approval of the minutes from February 13, 2012 meeting, please.
Madam Mayor, I approve the minutes of the February 13, 2012 meeting. Be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
You have a second.
I second that motion, Madam Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Our approval of the fiscal department reports and paid mill bills per month of February 2012, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve.
Second, please.
I second, Madam Mayor.
All, all approval.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public, my name is Robert Lightcap. I'm the solicitor for the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority. With me this evening is Reverend Imra Bertillon, who's the executive director of the Bethland Home in Ligonier. The Latrobe Industrial Development Authority has agreed to do a project involving the Bethland Home. The project involves, as you'll hear from Reverend Bertillon, the construction of various duplexes as independent living units. Under the Internal Revenue Code, it is required that a public hearing be held by two bodies, one being the body which formed the Industrial Development Authority, which is Latrobe City Council, and also a governmental body in which the facility is to be located. And in this particular case, you're holding the public hearing on behalf of both yourself, the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority, and the Western Memorial County Board of Commissioners. After the public hearing, there is a resolution prepared by your solicitor approving the project, and also we are on the agenda to have a similar type of resolution by the Western Memorial County Commissioners at their next meeting on March 22. The Latrobe Industrial Development Authority approved the project at their meeting last Tuesday, the 6th of March, and the project involves $6 million in new construction in Ligonier Township with financing to be provided by Laurel Bank. There will not be at risk the farming power of the city, or the county, or the state. It's a self-paid project, and the Bethland Home will be completely responsible for payment of the debt. It's limited, what they call limited recourse debt. You may ask why does the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority get involved in a project in Ligonier Township? The Latrobe Industrial Development Authority has, all industrial development authorities has countywide jurisdiction, and we have done projects in the past for what we consider to be our service area. We have a number of residents of the city of Latrobe who are residents of the Bethland Home, and we feel it's appropriate for us to engage in that activities to help Bethland Home when they do so. We did a prior project for those members of council who were on council back in 2007. We did a project involving the extension of a waterline and remodeling project for them, which is still in books. I am going to turn the mic over to Reverend Bertillon, who can give a two-minute summary of what we're doing, and then, Madam Mayor, I suggest we throw it open for any possible discussion.
Lightcap, Madam Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, Bethland Communities has been in its present location now for 90 years, and we evolved from an orphanage back in the early part of the 20th century to what we are today, which is a continuing care retirement community. Bethland has an ongoing strategic planning process, the one that began in 2009, discerned that retirement housing was a need in the Ligonier Valley, moderate-priced retirement housing. And after due diligence, we determined and applied to the township for a project that would, in the end, construct 72 new retirement cottages in two phases. The financing for which we are applying now is the first phase of that project, which would be up to 24 new cottages, 12 duplexes, 24 cottages to be constructed this year. And we are hopeful that we will achieve the project worthwhile and are available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Noted, Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing, so the opportunity should be given to any member of the public that desires to speak too.
Anyone wish to speak for him?
Thanks for the legal fees and the posting of the newspaper.
Bethland Home.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Tom Gray, please.
I believe it is here, Rose. Mayor Griffin, members of city council, Solicitor Kelly, Barb and Alex, and residents, thank you for having us here at the meeting this evening. I have with me this evening Mr. Ken Orry from Gibson Thomas Engineering. Ken's going to give a presentation of the Act 537 Plan as it has been developed by the Latrobe Municipal Authority, and Ed Schmidt, Principal of Gibson Thomas Engineering, also in attendance to provide some support for us this evening. Before I introduce Ken, I'd like to give a little history of the sewage treatment in the Latrobe area and surrounding communities, and how we've gotten to the point where we are now. Way back in the 1950s, the Latrobe community began to take interest in sewage treatment by building an interceptor sewer, connecting it to a sewage treatment plant down at the present location. It opened in 1960, served only the Latrobe community, and it was a primary treatment facility, very rudimentary in nature, and that's the way we survived in Latrobe for the next 12 years. In 1972, the EPA approved what's known as the Clean Water Act, and it mandated a couple of things. First thing that it mandated was that the treatment plant achieve secondary treatment capabilities, okay? That same mandate took place all across the United States, it was a federal mandate, that secondary treatment be achieved. The second thing that was mandated was that Latrobe enter into agreements with surrounding communities that drain into this same drainage area, and that the treatment plant be expanded to handle all of the sewage capacity for Latrobe parts of Youngstown, I'm sorry, all of Youngstown Borough, parts of Unity Township, and parts of Dairy Township. The treatment plant then was expanded, it was increased in capacity to the 5 million gallon treatment plant, it achieved the secondary status that the EPA mandated, and it opened in 1978 in this current capacity. A few things that did occur was in 1973, an intermunicipal agreement was signed among a number of entities, including the municipalities that I mentioned, and also their respective authorities. There are seven parties to that agreement, and that will become major in our ongoing plan. A number of things have happened subsequent to the opening of that plant in 1978, and if I may take just a few minutes to talk about them, a few additional clarifiers had to be built in the early 90s to handle the additional organic and hydraulic flows that reached our treatment plant, and those two clarifiers were paid for through a Penn Vest loan. We also replaced the chlorination system, the disinfection system at the treatment plant with a UV system. We replaced a number of the original pumping facilities that were at the treatment plant, and most recently, we added a centrifuge to assist the sledge handling from the treatment plant. Again, a number of these things were paid for through Penn Vest loans, and I think the point that I want to stress the most is, the original EPA grant funding back in the 1970s, the authority was responsible for a 25 percent share of the financing of that upgrade to secondary treatment. All of the other things that I just mentioned, all of those things are now paid for, okay? So all of the projects we are going to be looking in the near future, we are at a good launch point for. We are debt-free on the sewage department of the Latrobe Municipal Authority, and we currently have about $1.2 million in our capital additions fund, so we are at a good place going forward. That being said, everything was flowing along nicely until the early 2000s, when DEP came through and started to talk about wet weather issues, and the fact that our sewage treatment plant was both hydraulically and organically overloaded. And going forward, a number of things had to be done. Back in the early 2000s, we signed the corrective action plan with DEP. A lot of projects had to be completed by not only the Latrobe Municipal Authority, but also Dairy Township Municipal Authority and Unity Township Municipal Authority. A number of those projects included the replacement of the Saxon Run Interceptor from Dairy Township from out the Pandora area to the treatment plant, paid for by the Dairy Township Municipal Authority. A couple of the projects that were undertaken in Latrobe was the lining of the Soffer Run Sewer from the Fifth Court area and parts of Dairy Township down to our interceptor. We also had a major sewer separation project up in the Lincoln Avenue area, which removed a number of catch basins from the sanitary sewers. And we also conducted a downspout removal project through the entire city, and achieved about a 94 percent removal of all downspouts into the sanitary sewer. By doing all of these projects and Unity and Dairy Townships completing projects, under this corrective action plan with DEP, we were able to maintain enough taps that growth was able to continue in the surrounding areas. However, in December of 2010, DEP finally wrote us a letter and said they were looking for an Act 537 Plan update by March 1st of 2012, which was going to explain where we were going within the next 20 years with sewage treatment in not only the Latrobe area, but also the adjacent communities that we've been talking about. Our authority charged our engineering staff with the task of developing this Act 537 Plan update to DEP. About two weeks prior to the March 1st, 2012 deadline, that draft plan was submitted to DEP. A copy of the plan was delivered to each of the participating municipalities. What Ken and I are doing is, we're making our, as we call it, our dog and pony show, we're visiting each and every municipal government and municipal authority that's involved, making a presentation on the plan that has been developed. We are now in the process of seeking public comment, and then the final plan will be submitted to DEP. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Ken Orry from Gibson Thomas Engineering. We do have a few handouts, and I'll also tell you that Ken's entire presentation will be available after the program for anyone who wants to take it with them. Ken?
I'm Ken Orry with Gibson Thomas Engineering. Thank you for having us here. I don't know if we want to kill light or not. Can everyone see that okay? It's kind of washed out just a bit. Yeah. Okay, what Tom discussed was a little bit of the history of what's going on. These are perfect. What got us to where we are today, okay? We are going to go over, a little bit more about where we stand today, what we've done, really the issues facing. We're going to dive into some of that stuff, and then these various things. This is a formal presentation, but if you have questions or if you see something, it's okay to raise your hand. Just raise your hand, I'll address you. If I can answer it, I will. If it's the next slide, I'm going to say, hold on a second, I'll answer the second. Okay? So, the first thing that's being passed out, right? That's going around front. The first thing that's coming around is an official Department of Environmental Protection flow chart. The flow chart tells you exactly what you're supposed to do, how you're supposed to do it. Right now, we are in the public comment. We submitted a draft plan to DEP as it shows in the flow chart, and we are out in public comment. Why are we doing this presentation? Well frankly, this is some really boring stuff, okay? Why is it boring? Because your toilet is still going to flush the exact same way when we're all done. Nothing's going to change, okay? That's the problem with, you know, water projects are great, because everyone's water tastes better afterwards. Sewer projects, when you do that, it still goes away, and hopefully you don't see it again, okay? Now, a little bit about the Latrobe Municipal Authority system. It can handle 5 million gallons a day of sewage. When it's not raining, today is not that day. When it's not raining, it'll treat 5 million gallons. I'm trying to think of the biggest tank, probably the biggest tank you see is up on Donahoe Road on the way out of town. It's probably, when you think about it, it's probably like 20 to 30 times that volume you see in that tank, being treated every day. When it rains, much like today, the treatment plant can handle up to 13 MGD, million gallons a day, 13 million gallons a day. Yes, that is a lot of stuff, okay? There are 18 combined sewer overflows. Combined sewer, water, rainwater go into the same pipe. 18 pipes where this water can enter into the stream. 200,000 feet of pipe, meaning pipes that convey sewage, 733 manholes. Customer breakdown as to who's in the Latrobe Municipal Authority system. Simple breakdown. Roughly a third in Dairy, or probably, you know, 3,000 in Dairy Township, 3,800 here, 4,300 Unity, and 216 customers. You see here, it says, separate combined sewer, separate. That's kind of what I was talking about, combined sewer overflows. Separate sewer means your crap goes this way, and your rainwater goes that way. This is what gets to the plant. Combined, same pipe, all goes to the plant. This number of 11,484, yes, we know, it's probably going to change every day, you know, when homes are being demolished, people moving in and moving out, but 11,484, that is an important number. Now again, what you see, the area in blue is the Dairy, that's the 3,100 customers. The area in yellow, which is the city of Latrobe, 3,800 customers. The area in red, or dark brown, depending upon how you view it, that is Unity's section. You notice, really, three different areas with almost kind of the same customer count. It's amazing how much different dynamics are. Now, why are we here? Why does DEP care? Why am I boring you? I am boring you for these things up there. Combined sewer overflows, these are sewers that dump water into the river when it's raining real hard. Separate sewer overflows, these are points in certain systems, manholes, things where water comes up and out, into the surrounding. A lot of times, separate sanitary sewer overflows aren't in the best places. Hydraulic overloading at the plant, that's kind of what started this, because we have all this extra rainwater coming to the plant, caused what's called a hydraulic overloading. We are trying to cram 10 pounds of water into a 5-pound bag. Organic overloading. This is the brewery. Okay, organics, if you think about it, I tell the story, my wife's probably sick of it, every day I yell because she cuts the crust off the kid sandwiches, and she doesn't put it in the trash can, she puts it in the sink, throws the grinder on, grinds it up, washes it, washes it down. That is a way to think of organic material going to the plant. So if you just think of that kind of bread stuff, and obviously the other stuff we deposit in the toilet, but with the brewery, you think of all the yeast and all the byproducts that are typically going to the treatment plant. I will address that issue separately, but we're going in a good direction. Now, combined sewer overflows. If you go to that window over there, you can actually see this, and I don't think the river's up high enough today, but this gate right here, that's the combined sewer overflow. This is the sign that says, when that gate's open, I really wouldn't go in the water, okay? I'm paraphrasing, of course. Now, how does that actually work? I'm going to try and stay out of the way. I know I'm going to kind of block your view here. All right. All right, how does this work? This dark stuff here, when they designed these systems, all these older towns, all the pipes went straight to the river, they didn't care. The rainwater in your pipes was a good thing because it cleaned out all the crap, okay? So, this all went to the river way back when. We built the treatment plant, like Mr. Gray explained, what happened was, we built this pipe here to take this little bit of brown stuff every day down to the treatment plant. We didn't want to build a plant to take all this rainwater. So what we did, we being engineers at the time, what we did is, we put these little walls in, so the brown stuff came, hit the wall, went to the treatment plant. When it rained real hard, the pipe got a little bit more full, the water went over, but we were still able to take that water, most of the brown stuff, to the treatment plant. So on the average day, say if there's one gallon, we take three and a half gallons to the treatment plant when it rains. That's the design, 350 percent. Homes, storm drains, business, commerce, everything, all comes into this pipe and then goes to the treatment plant. Now, is that a good thing? Is it a bad? It sounds like a bad thing, but it's actually extremely advantageous for the city of Latrobe when we're talking about these big issues. What's an asset of? Separate sewer overflow. This is, when I said burping manhole, you've seen all these manholes along the river, okay? This is a separate sewer overflow. I said they don't always happen in the best spot, I'd be kind of annoyed if that was my front yard. Now, what causes this is different than the combined sewer. Sometimes you get alligators and blockages and stuff in the pipes, it's going to happen, okay? You're going to get blockages, roots, things like that, and it's going to cause water to come out because there's a physical blockage. This is more due, because it's wet weather, it's due to rainfall. Trying to cram 10 pounds into a 5-pound bag, the water doesn't know where to go, so it goes up and out, okay? This is a problem.
So these are actual photos from our area of raw sewage mixed with rain.
This one's not. This one's not, but this one is. And this is not an actual alligator in your city.
Thank you for clarifying.
You never know. You know, with the news every year, I wanted to clarify, there are no random alligators within the Latrobe system, West Waterway. Yeah, they're all gone, West Waterway.
Ken, just a quick question. Is that water primarily rainwater without the brown stuff? I mean, is the brown stuff solid?
Yes, that is primarily...
Water coming in and out.
Yes, yep, that's right. Yeah, I'll just sit on the carpet so nobody hears the vibrating. Now, what is the goal of this big plan? It's about this big. The goal is we want to treat 85 percent of the water that comes down the pipe within the city of Latrobe. Why only 85 percent? Because it's been deemed that because you're combined, the last 15 percent does not pose a large water quality, because frankly, it's the water coming off the streets that would normally go to the stream anyway. So, of 10 gallons that the city of Latrobe sends, eight and a half of it, when it rains, has to get to the treatment plant. Now, for Unity and Dairy, every drop of theirs has to reach the treatment plant. 100 percent of their water has to get to the treatment plant. The reason is, it's viewed that because it is a separate system, because it's supposed to be sewage-only, that that would be stronger than that which takes in direct rainwater and catch basins and things in the city. So they're saying that because the sewage is probably stronger, then we have to treat 100 percent of every drop. So if there are 10 gallons going in, 10 gallons have to go to the plant. So if you think of it, 20 gallons get to the plant, I mean, 20 gallons coming down the pipe, we have to treat eight and a half of Latrobe and all 10 of what's coming from the other community.
I have a question. When you say "they," who do you mean? DEP?
They mean the Latrobe Municipal Authority, okay? Now, the other thing is, we have to try and limit overflows to four times a year. What that means is that 85 percent, we have to do that on days like today, you don't want to be using one of your four bites of the apple. Days like today, you want to be able to get it all to the treatment plant, treat it, because we all know there's bigger batter storms around here, okay? Now, our ultimate goal is to do this as cheap as possible, period, end of discussion. Sometimes, what's the cheapest thing may not be the cheapest for each respective community, but it's the cheapest for the region. We have to think, if the city of Latrobe is working with Bethland, which isn't even within their borders, because it's for the good of the region, you have to go with the cheapest overall region, because that's going to be the impact. you have to go with the cheapest overall region, because that's, that's gonna be the impact. Now, again, this map kind of shows up on the new plate. What we did in order to create and come up with solutions, we used Renatch Environmental, and we monitored at thirty-seven different points within the system. We used an independent third party, and we monitored at thirty-seven different points within the system.
Actual flow meters in the...
Actual flow meters, so we, we had, we had little electronic devices, yes, we put computers in sewers now, okay? We had little electronic devices that measured how much stuff was coming through the pipes. When it rained, we got more, when it wasn't raining, we got less. So, now, it shows up horribly, for example, this is one of the locations of combined sewer overflow. The picture that you saw, that showed behind the high-rise, those are located here. They're, they're more evident in, I believe, in the, one of the next handouts. So, what we have here, walk back. What we have here is Unity Township through Niall Run flows in through this area up here. The Hillview area of Derry comes close through this area. This is a long run, which meets up with Sulphur Run, you heard Tom mention about the work we did there. Sulphur Run is the city of Latrobe and Derry, the St. Clair area of Derry comes down, they meet together here. Swing around the bend, Monastery Run, St. Vincent, all of that comes in right where this green dot is. And then we just pick up all the different parts of Latrobe on the way into town. Treatment plant is located way down there.
Derry also comes in Saxon Run.
Yeah, that's right. Derry also, that is Ed Schmidt, Vice President of Gibson Thomas, in case you're wondering who the heckler is. Saxon Run comes down from this, from Derry Township Municipal Authority, up there. Now, what did we look at for all of this stuff? How do we solve this problem? We looked at pulling Unity Township out, pulling portions of Unity Township out, pulling all of Unity Township out. We looked at putting separate little treatment systems on the end of all combined sewer overflows, so that the water going to the creek gets treated first. We looked at building a parallel interceptor, meaning having two of those big lines that come all the way down by the river. We looked at making a gigantic plant at the end. We looked at all kinds of different alternatives, and just the way it always is, none of them worked. Because that's the way the world is. So what did we have to do? We had to take the best parts of some of the alternatives, bring them together, and create a hybrid solution. The hybrid solution is the construction of a four-million-gallon tank. Construction of a four-million-gallon tank. We are going to put those end-of-pipe treatment systems on three of the CSOs, the three largest ones. One is right here at the end of Spring Street, the other one is up on Sulphur Run, and the other one is, um...
At the plant, I believe you captured.
Yeah, right, right at the vicinity of the plant. Now, there's a little thing up there called five-point-six-four. Do you remember I said, treatment plant capacity is five MGD? Five, can treat five million gallons a day. Back in two thousand-ish, the Latrobe Municipal Authority asked DEP, they said, hey, we are doing everything we, we can, and we can easily treat five-point-six-four, six, an additional six-hundred-and-forty-thousand gallons a day. We can treat that much more and not really affect anyone. We are still meeting the water quality requirements at the end of the plant. DEP said, nice try, you have too much organics coming in because of the brewery, and you have too big of a wet weather problem. Well, construction of a four-million-gallon equalization tank and the pump system takes care of our hydraulic issue. So no longer are we trying to cram ten pounds into a five-pound bag. What we're doing is, we're putting five in, we're waiting for that to empty, then we're putting another five in when we drain the tank. The Latrobe Brewery is in the middle of constructing a new system that will remove, they are currently at six, six thousand pounds a day?
Approximately.
Approximately six thousand pounds a day of organic, you know, pink and red crust, stuff like that. That's how much is coming to the treatment plant. They are gonna be taking that down to their, their target goal is seven-hundred-and-fifty pounds. So the reason DEP said no-go on the five-point-six-four was because we had too much coming from the brewery. They solved their problem. And might I add, not a cost, not a dime cost to any of the customers within the service area. So what did that do? Hey, DEP, we solved our hydraulic issue. DEP, we solved our organic issue. And we now have this additional six-hundred-and-forty-thousand gallons a day. Their indications thus far, what their, some of what their regulations require, um, we should get that in what's called a, you know, a rerating. In other words, there's no real physical construction required in order to make it happen. Why does that matter? This is two thousand homes worth of growth. So, we now can add two thousand additional customers. Part of, part of the residents here probably say, hey, we don't have two thousand, we don't have two thousand homes worth of growth here. Well, this is something the solicitors, all of us, the solicitors after the fact, are gonna have to get together and figure out how they want to allocate that. Maybe somebody pays for it now, maybe somebody pays for it later. But in the long run, that's two thousand additional customers instead of eleven thousand that can help share the cost down the road. People that didn't necessarily cause the problem, or they weren't a part of the problem, but they can help share in the cost of, of the fix. Now, what I'm gonna do is show you your last handout. Again, you can barely see this, so I'm, this is the old racetrack. What we're looking at is a tank by the old racetrack.
It's the map on the back of your handout.
Yeah, it's the map on the, it's the map on the very back, that's why we handed some of these out. The idea of a tank is that, down here is our five-pound bag, right here by the nature. Or just on the racetrack, sorry. Or old, just, by the empty building that's right here. Okay, this is our five-pound, this is our proverbial five-pound bag right here. So what do we have to do? We have five pounds coming from here and five pounds coming from the downside. This tank will, will have a valve that will be based upon the line and the plan. When this gets full, and it says, hey, we're at five pounds, shut us off. Valve closes and the water comes up here, and up here goes into the big tank. This is truly a regional solution. Why? Because you have Unity coming into a tank, you have Derry coming into Latrobe, which then goes into the tank. So should we all share in the cost? Yes. Could we say, hey, let's build a tank down here in Unity, let's build a tank up here in Derry, and let's build a tank here in Latrobe? Yeah, if we all want to draw those invisible lines and get everyone mad at each other. But then we have three pump stations, three separate construction costs, sorry, four of them. Three separate construction costs, three separate engineers involved, and three separate entities operating three separate tanks. What we're proposing is one tank here and some CSO systems, one would be located here, one would be located here, and the other one's only gonna be on the empty land over here. Those are the three sys, those are really the four components. Now, for those of you that are still quite unsure what it's gonna look like, I have the next slide, which I blew it up a little bit. So, this is currently one of the acid mine drainage ponds back there that's trying to help affect water quality by treating the mine drainage. The idea is the water coming down Sulphur Run, when it gets too high, would go into a big tank located in this area here. Underground. Now, there has been talk, Alex notified me, and when, when we discussed this, setting up the meeting, he notified me that there are discussions underway for public recreational uses of this property. When you see these underground tanks, one of the things you end up with is a big concrete pad. A concrete pad that some people put basketball courts on, some people put deck hockey courts on, some people put tennis courts.
Soccer fields.
Soccer fields. It's underground.
Baseball field, not baseball.
Lacrosse fields, okay? That's what we're doing, put lacrosse fields up. I just have to put some, I just have to make some plants in the audience. But the idea is, again, it's taking water, it's taking those high flows from Unity, from this portion of Latrobe that are down here, from down here, and it's taking from all communities. So all communities should, should share in the solution. Now comes the fun part. You notice I, I do handouts one at a time, they're already out, because everyone immediately jumps to the end, yes, the buffer did it, okay? Six-point-eight million dollars. Six-point-eight million dollars solve the region's problems. Now, there's some questions that we have to overcome, some issues we have to overcome. One of those questions is how big do you build the tank? For what storm? Do you build it for today? Yeah. For tomorrow? Who knows what tomorrow's gonna bring? What you'll see in this handout, which is our, which is one of the ways that we decided to design the storm, this handout shows you the level of rainfall total in one day we are designing for. Two-point-seven inches of rain in one day. At that point, our tank's gonna be full. What's the next logical question?
What if it rains tomorrow?
Oh, yeah. I knew it was gonna come from the audience, okay? The question is, what happens when you get the second day of two-point-seven inches of rain? Flip to the next page, please. This is an article, some of you may remember, one person in particular probably does not remember, it was two thousand and three. We had a little flooding problem here in town. I say little sarcastically, although I'm sure many of you were affected by it, especially on the public work side here in Latrobe. This effectively shut down the city of Latrobe. I know Route Thirty was basically closed for the flooding, they talked about the sections of Bradenville that was closed. Now, if you flip to this one here, flip to the, flip to the next page. That was three-point-six-eight, I know this is too many dots, three-point-six-eight inches of water in a week. Our geography is different than Pittsburgh. We are at the base of the mountains, water runs off faster and affects us faster than it does. There's a reason they don't close the monwarped till a week after it rains, it takes that long. There's a reason we get flooded in a hurry here, because we are at the base of the mountains. Now, for the quest, for the planted question of, what do you do when it rains two-point-seven inches? If you get, say, you know, let's say, five inches of rain in a day, in two days here, we don't care about this tank, we care about our homes. There comes a point when you're gonna get so much water coming down the pipe that you're gonna be more worried about the personal infrastructure that's around, and you're gonna have water pouring into your basements as residents. But are we worried about, are we gonna worry about treating the sewage that is coming into your basement from the river? We are not going to design a system that is gonna take the river water coming into your basement and get it to the treatment plant. It's not gonna be cost-effective, it's not gonna be practical. Where do we draw the line?
And we won't be required.
And we won't be required to. So where do we draw the line, two-point-seven inches? This is last summer, you've all seen it, well, actually, not in summer, it was like, it was like late fall, because everything there. This is two consecutive days. We've all seen it, we all drive across the bridge every day. One day you go out there, you look at it, you can see the low-flow channel right in the middle. And the next day you see manholes that are almost underwater, because the river is up so fast. Now, the next slide, the next slide I'm gonna do is kind of the next point, again...
Touch base on the storms above the line?
Yes. And again, when you look back, I'm gonna make you flip, I'm gonna make you work your mind tonight. When you flip, the green line, Irene, Agnes, Katrina, we're not designing for those events. Again, there's a lot of other issues in this town that have to be dealt with when we get fifty degrees in a day. We are not designing for those type of events. Yes, and this is fifty-nine years worth of history. I'm just taking your word for it. Fifty-nine years worth of history. So in fifty-nine years, there's seven times that more than two, two-point-seven inches of rain fell in a day.
Does this, this is strictly a quantity type of thing, not a quality, I assume. In other words, is, are that, is the, the plan that the EPA or somebody requires it, is it also requires like the quality of the water, or the quality of the, what's going in?
Yes, yes. We are, we are using an, an approach, that's a very good question. Remember that eighty-five percent number?
Yeah.
Okay? That eighty-five percent number, EPA says, if you capture and treat eighty-five percent of the wet weather flows, then we presume that you meet water quality standards.
Does Marcellus shale drilling affect that in any way? Because you've got...
Our, our decisions, no. Does, does Marcellus shale impact water quality? I'll show you eight different articles that say eight, eight different things. But it does, but the Marcellus shale drilling, other than we hope to get some money from it down the line, I'll pay for the stuff, but, the Marcellus shale drilling does not impact water quality as it pertains to this plant. Now, this is the bottom of Sulphur Run. Many of you may have walked that area, and you may have wondered what these things are, the random manhole concrete sticking up. This is our combined sewer overflow structure. This is what takes some of the water, diverts it to the plant, diverts other water to the river. This is an average day. Look at the river. So once we get more than two-point-seven inches of rain down there, and it's all underwater, how do you design for that? Yeah, we could take those and make them fifteen feet tall. Have Stonehenge here in, in Latrobe. But then the giant stick's gonna come, or giant log is gonna float down and smash it. So ultimately, this is what we're talking about, designing for the storm that, that we show you. We have to be realistic. The two-year, twenty-four-hour, two-point-seven inches is the, is the minimum that the state will accept.
What's that mean, two-year, twenty-four hours? What do you mean by that?
In theory, back in nineteen eighty-eight, PennDOT did a study with the Soil Conservation Service. And so they determined that the volumes for certain areas, if you get two-point-seven inches of rain in twenty-four hours, that happens on the equivalent of every two years. So what we're saying is that, in theory, according to what PennDOT published in nineteen eighty-eight, we would, our tank would be too small every two years. But, contrary, seven times, and fifty-nine inches. It's the difference between theory and reality.
Our, our, our new tank, the four, the four-million-gallon tank?
Yes. Which we haven't built yet.
I know, I know.
All right, now it comes to the fun part that keeps everybody waiting. Six million eight hundred fifty-one, three hundred dollars. Now remember that, remember eleven thousand four hundred and eighty-four? That's what how many people, because it is truly a regional solution, that's how many people share this cost. What does that mean to you? It means three dollars and ninety cents per month. In addition to what you're paying now. The worst part is, toilet's gonna flush the exact same. Hopefully, we can work with the project and add some recreational improvements, so that there will be some visual benefit. But, you know, as we see it, three dollars and ninety cents, I'm sorry, he was.
So you're saying with parts of Dairy Township and Unity Township, you'll still, with this new tank, one hundred percent of the water coming from those areas?
Yes.
So, in retrospect. Unity Township and part of Dairy Township will be paying less than what the city of Latrobe will be paying. With the per customer increase a month.
Not sure if I follow. If you could rephrase that.
What he wants to know is, what, what's Unity Township people gonna pay compared to what we're gonna pay?
Three dollars and ninety cents.
They're paying the same.
Per customer. All eleven thousand people.
And they're getting one hundred percent of the water intake to go to the treatment plant?
Yes.
That doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't, it, it's because only eighty-five percent of ours.
If you had, if you had, if you had to capture a hundred percent, that cost would go up and everybody would pay more.
Absolutely. But in retrospect, or?
They're paying for their portion of the tank, because they have more customers. But we're probably putting more water in this.
Yeah, we're putting more sewage in it. So, so what, what is better, it's better to spread it around, because if we were, if, if Unity Township and Dairy or Yonkstown weren't involved, our rate would probably be maybe eight or nine dollars a month.
I'll split you at first.
He's just getting the regional, by having a regional.
Well, we're probably putting more, we're probably putting more sewage than the percentage of Unity Township.
I doubt it.
Can only, if a small portion of Unity Township was involved in it.
Oh, no, 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 no.
They have more people in it.
Yeah, they have four, they have over four thousand. Yeah, they have over four thousand people, you have thirty-eight hundred.
Okay.
But I think your point is that any individual municipality does it by themselves, it's gonna be more expensive than if we regionalize.
Correct.
That's really the.
Because you're gonna have to build the same pump station, and your tanks just can't be small.
And Kurt, the fact that only eighty-five percent of ours is going in and a hundred percent of theirs, it doesn't matter, all hundred percent of our water's still going in, it's just fifteen, it's, it's, it doesn't matter. I mean, I think he's thinking eighty-five percent versus a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a, which logically. You're right, sends up a red flag. I can, I can, I can completely understand your argument. However, because we only have to capture eighty-five percent, it can be smaller to us.
Ken, if, if I, and I think we had to clarify this with another question at another presentation. We're only talking eighty-five percent during wet weather.
During wet weather, yes.
During regular, on an annualized basis, we actually capture ninety-nine point seven percent of all the flow. For the year. It's only during wet weather events that that eighty-five percent number comes into play. So, you know.
Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump ahead again, you remember that two thousand homes construction? Okay? That's a chip. That's a bargaining chip, where I said all the solicitors are gonna have to sit down. Maybe that two thousand homes, again, I'm not a planning genius, but I don't see the two thousand home growth happening here in Latrobe. Okay? So that's your chip. How that, how those homes are gonna get divvied up? Do you add those customers on now?
Ken, and what was the average number of taps? Uh, per year for both Unity, Dairy and Latrobe, I, I think it's down to less than a hundred, is that correct, Tom?
Unity used two taps last year.
But. The, the going, the going, the going number would be a hundred, so your plan actually would provide, uh, twenty years worth of taps?
That was gonna be my question.
And Unity actually used?
They used a hundred, like, like you have a lot in, so there's, I've heard rumors that part of the problem is that they're, we've restricted tap in, but that's not true.
Ken? We've had a limited number, a limited maximum number.
Yeah, but have we ever used that?
We have never exceeded that number.
Are you talking EDUs?
Yes, yes, taps.
Not necessarily, I'm an EDU.
The second question I have is the Act five thirty-seven plan that was, that is, that the Unity Township Municipal Authority has offered. What is the amount of the increase per customer in Unity Township if their plan's adopted?
Um, well. We want to, tonight, we wanna focus on educating you about our plan. A much higher number than ours. But, but, we don't wanna stand here.
It was in the paper.
We know the numbers. It answered through a question. Eleven dollars and ninety cents.
Yeah, that's what I thought, eleven ninety.
We wanna, what, what we wanna do is, those, the joint discussions are gonna come down the road, we're trying to stay focused on our plan tonight, we don't wanna get into it here, you know? This is, this is our plan.
Ken, I don't think.
I know, I, I know where you were going, I just wanted to block that to everybody else.
Alma Mayor, Latrobe Municipal Authority has never had any difficulty in allocating sewer taps, never, as I can recall.
That's correct.
And, and if Latrobe doesn't use them, I think they've been divvied out to Dairy Township and Unity Township, we've never had any complaints, really, that I can recall.
The other point I think we need to make at that, at that juncture there, is that's an average number right now, we have actual flow measurements from different municipalities, and the solicitors sit down to negotiate in a, a new agreement relative to the capital costs of this arrangement. We have those flows available, and it may come into who pays what share of that three ninety, and whether it goes up a little or not a little based on your flows.
So, the way I understand it is both, everybody submits their plans and DEP makes the final decision? Is that how it works?
That's, that's, again, like, like I'm paying you for the lead-up question, where do we go, where do we go from here? Okay? Latrobe Municipal Authority. This is part of the roadshow. We are out here educating so that these questions can happen. Because frankly, the document's this thick, we all know nobody's gonna necessarily read the whole thing, okay? We're out here explaining to you what these plans are. Now, these, where do we go? Comments. Hopefully, Alex can kinda take something from, from this presentation and submit to us official comments on behalf of the city, we can work with him on that and help him address specific city concerns as it pertains to the plan. We are taking Dairy, we're encouraging Dairy to do the same thing, their specific comments. Now, they are to submit comments also on the, on the Unity Plan. What are we gonna do with all those comments? We're gonna take them, bring them all together, address them in the best way we can, from a Latrobe Municipal Authority standpoint. The Latrobe Municipal Authority does have members from Unity and Dairy on its board. So the idea would be to take all of those comments, bring them together, have a meeting with everyone to just explain how we address their comments. And then take that and submit that to DEP. Now, is DEP gonna be the final arbiter in all of this? I don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know. But the reason, the reason we submitted the plan.
We can't work it out ourselves, they'll work it out for us.
That's most likely the way it comes down.
And the reason we submitted the draft plan to DEP is, maybe they come back with comments that give us a solid direction. Maybe they come back with comments saying, hey, it looks good to us, go ahead. We don't know.
If you remember on the original plan, when the plant was first built, that's kinda what happened. You know, they tried to get everybody together, and then I believe they went to Dairy and said, you are competent.
Now, you said, is this your first roadshow, or is this, where have you been so far?
Dairy, Dairy Township Municipal Authority, Yonkstown Borough, we have not yet been to Unity.
Yes. Are you going to?
Are you going to?
Yes.
When, do you know?
Uh, we hope at their next scheduled meeting.
That's the supervisor.
We are meeting with Unity Township Municipal Authority on the twenty-first. Twenty-first, at their next, it was their next ready.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding to the three dollars and ninety percent month increase, is, is there any chance that would come down with the closure of, obviously, Chestnut Beach Beverage and the brewery getting their own facility? You know, you raised our prices then, to when they were booming at top notch, because the truck handle and upgrade are faculty to plus you over there. So, you know, with that being said, I mean, with those.
You know, if we lose the income of the brewery, is that what I'm gonna, is that rate gonna go up? The three dollars and ninety cents, and, and, another, another good question, the three dollars and ninety cents. That is based upon a rate of four percent over twenty years. Current interest rate that the authority can get if they borrow is two point oh seven. The second aspect of the question is, that, the three dollars and ninety cents, I can tell you is not dependent upon anything the brewery does. Now, the operating budget that that is on top of, I can't speak to that, that would be a better question for, um, for Mr. Gray. But obviously, if you lose a major revenue source from anything, you're gonna have to make it up.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to the three ninety as being an average number across the board right now to the eleven thousand four hundred customers. Okay, if, if, when the negotiations for contract come into play and flows differ between municipalities, there is a point to negotiate, and I can tell you that Latrobe would be in a pretty good position under those negotiations to potentially lower the three ninety. Also, if we get a better rate, any grant money or anything, we can come into the picture here, that can, that'll improve that, that number on, Kenny used four percent twenty years, we get a Pennvest loan, we get any type of grant money, that number comes down.
Now, the talk, I'm sorry.
Are those eleven thousand customers include all businesses and stuff, or that's just what, that's everything?
That is, that is eleven thousand four hundred eighty-four customers.
Uh, Ken, uh, one point I wanted to touch on, I think Unity Township Municipal Authority's Act five thirty-seven plan. Attempts or recommends that five hundred customers or seven hundred and fifty EDUs be pulled from the Latrobe system. That's my understanding of their present plan. Would that not also cause an increase in this three dollars and ninety cents if we lost the five hundred customers?
Well, if in fact Unity does pull customers, the size of our tank goes down, so technically, you're right. In that, our cost would go down, but then, suddenly, we have the size of our tank, is then spread over less people. The benefit of this plan is that it spreads it over the maximum amount of people. Obviously, anybody you pull out of the system is less people to spread the cost of a, of a regional fix. So the Unity Plan, if it does pull people out, obviously, the operation cost, we still have to have a guide to treatment plant, none of that stuff's gonna change, so you're just dividing it over less people. So that cost has to go up.
Right now, we have a total of what, eleven thou, you said eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand four hundred eighty-four.
So five hundred, five hundred customers are not that great of a percentage of the system.
No, but it was actually more like two to three thousand.
It's a bigger number, that's not the right number.
Exactly, and we have a lease agreement with them anyhow, they cannot pull that people from the original plan, so we have a link to stand on there, we can refuse to let them pull that people.
Well.
Well, that's the big.
That's a whole other discussion, that's what the attorney's gonna involve.
Yeah, it depends how it's interpreted, that's gonna be left to the lawyer, or the, or the judge.
Well, Jim, I hear you and I agree, it is.
That's the game you play, no?
But, but by the same token, it would seem to me the, the more prudent way would be to try, uh, as best we can through comments and such, to have DEP see the wisdom of our plan.
Yes.
As opposed to the wisdom of the other plan.
I think the other point is that, significant point is three dollars and ninety cents a month versus eleven dollars and ninety cents a month. That's a big difference.
Well, I don't know, even with them, I don't think you're talking eleven dollars and ninety.
No, what I'm saying is that if their plan calls, if their plan gets approved, or as it's written versus ours, that it's, it's gonna cost everybody eleven dollars.
Ken, can you take the time to survey other rate payers in Westmoreland County, because Washington Township Municipal Authority rate payers pay sixty-five to seventy dollars a month for sewage. So again, I'll say that again, Washington Township Municipal Authority rate payers pay about seventy dollars a month for sewage.
I think one of the things Alex, we get involved in, you know, the newer systems obviously have newer debt, uh, higher debt, um, you know, the new Alex system that we're working on right now, they're gonna be looking at the, in the sixty dollar range on a monthly sewer bill, yeah, we've got, you know.
Yeah, so to put it in context, the average Latrobe or UTMA or Dairy Municipal Authority average monthly payment is significantly different than some of these newer systems being built.
I, I won't argue with you, but it's, you know, it's still a rate increase, or it's still, and we're trying to minimize all that.
Current Latrobe customers, the average customer pays eleven dollars and fifty cents per month for sewage.
Eleven dollars and fifty cents per month for sewage treatment.
And that's a sewage rate increase, did, will that affect the water rate increase?
It will not.
Okay.
Well, with that being said, thank you for your time, I know it's a really exciting topic.
You did a good job, Ben, you did a good job.
I'll be here all week, don't get the tip your waiter away from you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You don't have to wait.
May we?
I'd be very kind, you're good. You start talking about MTVs, I'm thinking, uh, you know, genuine draft.
Where's the, where's, one minute, two minutes?
Al, did you ever see that?
All right, now we're on citizen's request. May I right-wish to speak? Nope, okay, that's too bad. Committee reports? Anybody else want to hear? Board authorities, anybody else? Department, um, Chief, Bluehorn?
Uh, nothing to report, I don't know.
Okay. Did John read? And I'm finding today, okay, Jawush?
Nothing.
All right. Green?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, the first action item under the Administration Finance Department is a resolution regarding the Bethland Home Project for which you just heard the very nice presentation. The resolution reads, it follows approving the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority Bethland Home Project, and I'm going to highlight it, whereas Bethland Home has requested the authority to issue its tax exempt note or notes, amount not to exceed six million dollars to finance a project consisting of construction, furnishing and equipping twelve, uh, equipping twelve duplex cottages containing a total of twenty-four, independent living retirement units, site work on the property, and cost provisions of the notes, whereas a public hearing was held, uh, this evening on Monday, March twelfth, two thousand and twelve, at six thirty P M. And whereas the mayor has requested the advice of councilors to whether or not she should approve the project under the authority granted to her, under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, now therefore being resolved, section one, uh, that the Council of City of Latrobe is hereby approving financing of the project for purposes of FARA. Section two, the mayor of the City of Latrobe is hereby authorized and directed to render approval of the project under the provision. to render approval of the project under the provisions of P E F R A, P E F R A. Section three, that the approval granted is under and subject to the provisions of the Humble Charter and all other applicable ordinances of the city. And it is further subject to the express condition that any note issued thereunder shall not constitute or give rise to a punitive liability of the city of Latrobe or a charge against its respective creditors' action powers. And section four, that the mayor, secretary of city council, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents, including the approval and consent form attached here too, to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of this date. The proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second.
Second motion.
Mr. Kim, any questions or discussion? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve fifteen. Mr. Scipora? Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Those four yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item on the agenda is also a resolution that is entitled Ratifying Prior Action of the City Manager in Accepting a Department of Community and Economic Development Grant to the Early Intervention Program. And whereas the city has been notified by the Department of Community and Economic Development that it is the recipient of a grant in aid in the amount of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars for the development of a five-year financial plan through the department's fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve early intervention program. Whereas the city manager was required to accept this grant in aid prior to the regular business meeting scheduled for March two thousand and twelve. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe hereby ratifies and approves the action of the city manager in accepting the grant in aid from D C E D in the amount of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. And section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer be and are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the acceptance of the above described grant resolved. In council of this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, second please.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Wolford, any questions, discussion? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve sixteen. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Those four yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item actually is in conjunction with the resolution that we just approved. It is a resolution and the title is approving an agreement with Delta Development Group Inc. for professional management consulting and financial services. And it begins where I asked pursuant to the previous resolution, the Latrobe City Council ratified the action of the city manager in accepting the Department of Community and Economic Development Grant for the preparation of a five-year financial plan through the early intervention program. Whereas quotations were sought and received for professional consulting services to assist the city in the development of said financial plan. Whereas the city now desires to approve it and agreement with Delta Development Group Inc. for professional management consulting and financial planning services, now therefore be resolved. Section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve and authorize entering into a community planning agreement, i.e. the contract with Delta Development Group Inc. and the city of Latrobe set forth on exhibit A attached here too, for professional consulting and financial planning services. And section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the agreement approved herein. Resolved in council of this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Wolford, second?
Second motion.
Mr. Jim, any questions or discussion? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve seventeen. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Those four yes.
Motion carried.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution as well. The title is approving agreement with Pango USA LLC to provide pay-by-phone services. Whereas the city desires to engage contractor for the purpose of providing pay-by-phone services for meter parking in designated areas of the city. Whereas the city believes that Pango USA LLC possesses the required resources, skills, and support capability to implement this program, now therefore be resolved, section one. That the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby authorize and approve entering into an agreement to provide pay-by services in the form attached here too as exhibit A in section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution and the agreement approved herein. Resolved in council of this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Wolford, second please.
Half second motion.
Mr. Jim, any questions or discussions?
Al, could you explain to everyone what that is, please?
As we've discussed previously, the city, of course, Latrobe is addressing aggressively its parking issues by rehabbing the garage. One of the things we're going to be doing eventually is raising the rates. In order to soften the discomfort of rates raising, we want to create more opportunities for customers to pay for parking. And one of those is utilizing technology whereby Pango would offer to smartphone users in town and regular cellphone users the opportunity to pay via their phone, like Vandango does to buy movie tickets for smartphone users while you're parking in town. The beauty of it is, if you will, pardon a term from technologies, it will be all in the cloud in the sense that it will be via the internet. The city will not be required to purchase equipment, we will make a small investment in signs. And it works like this, the percentage of customers of our system who choose to use Pango, a percentage of that revenue will be directed to Pango. So for example, if ten percent of the users in our town use Pango, a percentage of ten percent will be paid, you know, will be used to pay for their services. So if ninety percent continue to slug meters as they normally do with coins and nickels and dimes and quarters, all of those revenues will be just collected as they normally are. So for Pango, the game works like this, they're gonna wanna try to get a bunch of smartphone users to use their system. Okay, that, that's their goal, they're gonna wanna do that. They're gonna wanna try to provide opportunities for customers to move over to that. For us, it's a two-year agreement, and at the end of two years, if we think it's not a good agreement, we renegotiate it. If we think it's not a good service, we end the service. But the, the cost to the city at this point is almost, is quite minimal. It's a, it's a couple thousand dollars related to some signs and some agreements. We don't have to buy any more equipment, we don't have to change any meters, we just simply need to help with signage to alert customers that this opportunity exists. And again, we just see it as an opportunity for them to, to have another, another way, if you will, to pay for parking in town.
Alex, does this work at the individual meters, or is it for like long-term parking, or?
It works at the individual meters and a long-term as well, there are, there are opportunities for them as well long-term. But it's like this, they pull up to a spot, they get out their cellphone, their smartphone, they initiate the pay-by-phone app, the meter starts to run. They get back in their car, they tell the, the app that they're leaving, the meter, the clock stops. When our meter attendant goes by notices that the time is expired on the head, they will look at the license plate on either a Droid, iPhone, or whatever they've got. They can run that license plate to, through their app. And Pango will say, yes, it's paid, it's a Pango customer, or no, it's paid. If it's not paid, it gets a ticket, of course, if they're paid through Pango, they don't get a ticket.
What kind of cellphone do you have to have?
Smartphone.
Just, just basically smartphone, it could be.
I mean, for those of us that are.
It can also use a regular cellphone, and it works like this on a cellphone. When you pull up to the spot, you dial the one-eight-hundred number. Again, you've already pre-approved, you've already set up an account that presumes you've done that. You can set up an account via, via paper and mail it in, or you can set it up via the internet. But if you have a regular cellphone, you just dial the number when you get in, you dial the number when you leave. With the smartphones, it's either a Droid application or an iPhone application or other kinds of smartphone technologies, basically ones that enable you to get online and being able to get the, the internet.
Think of it like Easy Pass.
Yeah, I presume then that they will know how long we've been at a particular meter.
Well, the beauty of technology is.
Because you, you check in and check out, and then they, and then you pay accordingly, is that the idea?
Yes, sir.
And they remit to us, and they were, they remit to us then, left, left the, right.
Yeah, the mayor wants you to know that this is just not for young people, she has a Droid, she's gonna get an iPhone because she doesn't think her Droid is keeping up with her, so.
I told him to say that, because he says that all the time. Well, even people, even the mayor uses this, so he means even old people use it.
Well, the, the, you know, there, there's a thought that, you know, Latrobe wouldn't be able to handle this, but the reality is, in the last ten years, the movement to smartphones is such that there's more internet usage via these handheld devices than there are in desktop and laptop computers. So the reality is, this is the growth of, of what people are using day to day. Most people are using their desktops in favor of their handheld phones. And eventually, we're gonna see more processors move in this direction. I dare say that parking meters will be like payphones. There's not many payphones in Latrobe because people are using other devices. And I believe in the future, parking meters will head the same direction.
Alex, you will publish a detailed statement of this to the public, right?
Because this. When, yeah, when it's, when it's unrolled, we'll do like you do at Giant Eagle. For example, when people are Giant Eagle registering for their, you know, their GetGo, Savings Perks, those kinds of things, we'll, we'll set up tables around town with some St. College students, and we'll, we'll help people who wanna register, register. People have a smartphone, we'll show them how to download the app and how to register their app. If people wanna just do the pay, you know, the, the paper forms will do that. The idea stuffy is quite frankly, to do this in conjunction with the opening of the garage. What we're doing is preliminary work, we'll have to eventually install signage. The app will be uniquely created for Latrobe. Will be, I believe, the first customer in the United States of this company. This company has hundreds of cities in Europe and Israel, it's a, it's a company that originated out of Israel. So we look to be the first, you know, city in the U S to do it, we'll get an individual app created for us. But again, it's more like the August timeframe where people will, will really get it introduced. So in the summer, we're looking at helping people to sign up for it and start to learn about the technology.
And if I'm not wrong, I think there are other communities, big ones, in our country that are doing this, but they have their own program and so.
Yeah, quite frankly, all the major cities have pay-by, pay-by-phone apps. However, they have large parking departments with large I T departments who can afford to create their own apps and market them themselves. And what this does is enable small, small players like Latrobe to enter into the, you know, the information technology world and be able to take advantage of all the benefits that are out there for us.
Thank you, Alex. This is Resolution two thousand and twelve eighteen. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Those four, yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under the Administration Finance Department is a motion. And the motion reads, I move we authorize the city manager to send a letter to the Department of Community and Natural Resources in support of a request by the Latrobe Community Parks and Recreation Commission for a grant to complete phase three of the Cardinal Park Project. That is a motion.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor, second.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish? All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? They opposed, motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, and actually the last item under Administration Finance is a resolution. It is entitled Approving a Contract for Professional Services between the city of Latrobe and Mullin-Wanigan Associates Inc. for Planning Consulting Services. And whereas the city, city previously engaged Mullin and Wanigan Associates Inc. for the most recent development of the city's comprehensive plan. And whereas the city manager has determined that certain follow-up activities required between the city and Mullin and Wanigan Associates for finalization of matters related to the adoption of the prior comprehensive plan, now therefore be resolved, section one. The council of the city of Latrobe does hereby authorize and approve entering into a contract for professional services between the city of Latrobe and Mullin and Wanigan Associates Inc. in the form attached here as exhibit A. Section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution and the contract approved herein. Resolved in council of this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions highlighted by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Jim, second? May I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
I think it's, or Steve, even one.
I think it was Steve. What you, any questions or discussion? Questions? Okay, Mark? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve nineteen. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Those four, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we are now under the Public Works Department, and the first item is a resolution. And the title is Ratifying Prior Action of the City Manager in Accepting the Allocation from the Westmoreland County two thousand and twelve Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas the city has been notified that it was selected to be included in the Westmoreland County's two thousand and twelve Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas pending approval by the Westmoreland County Commissioners and the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the city will be funded for a street reconstruction project encompassing Avenue A, Avenue B, C, and Watkins Avenue in the total amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars. And whereas, the city manager was required to confirm acceptance of the grant offer by February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve. The council now that desires to ratify this action. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of Latrobe does hereby approve and ratify the action of the city manager in submitting written confirmation to Westmoreland County indicating acceptance of the above described Community Development Block Grant. And section two, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any, any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect the within resolution and the acceptance of the above described Community Development Block Grant. Resolved in council of this date, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolford, second please.
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Stephen? Any questions or discussion? Okay, Mark? This is Resolution two thousand and twelve twenty. Mrs. Wolford?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Those four, yes. Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is also under the Public Works Department, again, a resolution entitled Amending Chapter two fifty-six Vehicles and Traffic. Exhibit two fifty-six fifty-three, two-hour parking limit for all vehicles. Exhibit two fifty-six fifty-four, permit parking. And exhibit two fifty-six fifty-five, on meter, on-street meter parking facilities. Now therefore be resolved, section one. Chapter two fifty-six Vehicles and Traffic, section two five six five three, two-hour parking limit for all vehicles. Being the same is hereby amended to delete from this exhibit the following streets. East Fourth Avenue, on the south side, between Licketer Street on the east and Polk Street on the west. Section two. Chapter two fifty-six Vehicles and Traffic, section. Chapter 256 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 256-54 Permit Parking, being the same as hereby amended to delete from Exhibit 256-54 the following streets. The highway is Tacoma Avenue, the side is both, between Ligonier Street on the east and Tass Street on the west. Section three. Exhibit 256-55 On-St. Meter Parking Facilities, being the same as hereby amended to add to Exhibit 256-55 the following streets: Depot Street on the south side, between Ligonier Street on the east and Jefferson Street on the west, and Ligonier Street on both sides, between Walnut Street on the south and Chestnut Street on the north. Section four, that the Director of Public Works is hereby authorized to determine the type of space best suited to the locations and number of meter parking spaces to be installed for those additions under 256-55. Section five, that any and all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent here with are hereby repealed. Section six, that all other provisions of Chapter 256 not amended or affected by the provisions here and above said four shall remain in full force and effect. And section seven, that within resolution shall take effect on the date of posting an act and publication of notice of the same and that or resolved in council at this 12th day of March 2012, the motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
Sound moved.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish? Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have some questions.
Faster.
I have some questions. First of all, I don't think we should combine the two locations, East Fourth Avenue and Tacoma Avenue. And, you know, I've heard a little discussion about the parkings to be placed on Depot Street, and I just think that's going to cause a considerable amount of problems. I don't see people switching to the south lane so that they can run ahead of the other traffic. I don't see that happening. Ligonier Street, whatever, it's just a matter of clutter. But my question really is to this listener, does this have to be a majority of the council members or a majority of those present in order to pass a resolution?
The resolution, the majority is present. But if you, Mr. Jim, if you want to delete any of the sections, you have the right to make a motion, second, to amend this, expressing your concern.
Yes.
I'd like to see the... The Depot Street and the Ligonier Street parking, I would move to table that portion of the resolution. No?
Well, I would table the whole resolution or move to delete those for the time being that can always be put in the resolution.
Well, they'd have to be my motion to delete these for the time being until a plan is presented by the Director of Public Works, as to where the spaces are to be placed. I do know that a lot of people use that south side of Depot Street, especially starting before you get to Ligonier Street, when you're moving, when you're moving west, and they use it to put letters in the mailbox down on Depot Street between Jefferson.
Beyond Jefferson Street is where the snorkel is for the mail. We have made observations, we have drawn plans to add 10 two-hour meters on Depot Street on the side of the Latanzio Building, Dr. Dayhards, and so forth up to Ligonier. Again, the idea is that there's already parking on that side of the street from Alexandria down to Ligonier. We're just looking at adding spaces.
I know what you're, I know what you're looking at, but I'm still making the motion to delete that portion of the resolution. Well, I think that, first of all, at one time, we were going to go two ways on Depot Street, and that sort of fell through. But the other reason is, I think that the manager and the Public Works Director said that people are using that south lane so that they can speed around other cars.
Sometimes, I would characterize that as maybe 10% of the total people in that lane are doing it.
I wouldn't even characterize it at 10%. I travel that way all the time, and occasionally I will see somebody that will hotdog it.
But mainly taking...
It's used, though. Anybody that's going to the post office does use it. They go down that lane, and then they turn left to Jefferson Street. And you're going to have cars, and honestly, you don't have that much room on Depot Street, and you're going to be putting cars there that are going to have to back out and pull in, and you're going to disrupt the traffic. And that's also a state highway. Did you get approval in the state?
We've done it in accordance with Pendo Rex.
Well, those are my reasons for temporarily deleting that portion of the resolution.
Mr. Jim, a motion for a second.
Yeah, well, we...
Yeah, we had a motion in the second, didn't we?
To amend.
To amend.
We didn't have a motion to amend.
We have a second to make a motion.
He made the motion to delete, yeah. We have a second?
Can I ask any questions without a second, technically?
Do it for the last five minutes. Why not? Go ahead.
Alex, would you guys give a thought to the fact about people backing up and parking and the tie-up that that could cause on all that traffic?
Quite frankly, at peak times of day, the traffic already backs up to Alexandria towards the furniture store and creates what we call in the traffic world, a light delay. It doesn't seem to get acute enough to create a two or more light delay, which, you know, is more typical in an urbanized area. That's certainly something that concerns. I think a lot of those doctors and others who would benefit from that, quite frankly, wouldn't be using it at that peak time of the day. The other part of it, again, is just the nature of traffic in town. And if I could, it's just a commentary related to the urban environment which we exist, and that is, vehicles in town, as they traverse our town, must move slowly through town because the pedestrian, quite frankly, with our elderly community, is king. We're a sidewalk community with pedestrians, and vehicles are just looking to speed through town on Depot if they have to slow down because a car is parking on Depot. I would say, again, this is my commentary, so be it.
Okay, let me ask this. Chief and Joe, what do you think?
I don't agree with having parking on Depot Street.
You don't?
No.
Because?
I think it will be too congested. I think there will be too many people making left-hand turns from the wrong lane. I just think it's going to be more trouble than it's worth.
Mr. Bush?
The left lane, as the city manager had stated, we went and we viewed that, and we see what a lot of people are doing is using that left lane to get down and cheat and get a hole, get ahead of traffic. In the case of putting more parking on Depot, you're just extending what's already there. Pendo has no problem with that. If you cut it down to two lanes.
I can see some more spaces in front of the Wicker Store and down, but not necessarily between Ligonier and Jefferson. That's where I'd have a particular problem.
I also have a concern with an emergency. I'm looking at from the perspective of police or ambulance or fire response. Somebody's trying to park along that stretch, and we need to get down Depot Street in a hurry, and it's going to be immense.
What? May I make my second? I'm going to make a second amendment motion.
We have a second, the motion is second.
This is to eliminate that portion?
To eliminate, in fact, to eliminate section three from this resolution for possible consideration later on. Would ask if there's any more discussion?
Any more discussion?
None, and you're going to call for a...
I have a voice call. Hand vote, all in favor?
Wait a minute.
This is the amendment.
The amendment?
We're voting on the amendment to remove the two-way parking streets, that provision from this resolution.
Okay.
Or I should ask, Mr. Jim, is your motion for both, Ligonier as low as Depot or just Depot?
It's just Depot Street. Just Depot Street.
Okay, then I stand corrected. The amendment is to remove Depot Street only from section three. Leave in Ligonier Street. Okay. Depot Street, not whole.
Okay, now, we have a hand motion. All in favor? Three opposed? Okay.
Now, we are voting on the resolution with Depot Street.
Excuse me, the amendment carried two to one.
Three to one. Three to one. I voted three yes, one no.
Yeah, that's three to one.
One, two, three.
Did you go to support the amendment?
Yes.
Well, I did.
And I did. Three of us voted in the amendment.
We have three in our hands, and my four was two sent down.
So it's, that depots off of the resolution.
So we're now voting on the two sections, one for East Fourth Avenue regarding two-hour parking, one for Tacoma Avenue regarding permit parking, and authorizing parking meters on Ligonier Street between Walnut on the south and Chestnut on the north. That's the resolution.
You think they have a motion?
I sound moved.
No, that's all we have. So there's no further discussion, we're ready for the...
Okay, roll call.
This is Resolution 2012-21 as amended. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
That is four yes.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the last item under the Public Works Department is a motion, and it simply moved, it states, I move, we ratify the action of the city manager in seeking bids for the exterior painting of the municipal dome.
A motion?
That's a motion. That's a motion.
I make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, second.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That concludes the action items under this agenda, Madam Mayor.
Finished business?
Mr. Kelly? Anything on the crosswalks?
I know he's not here.
Yes, and quite simply, and I...
I'm a second to get it, and I've been patiently waiting for a while.
I know you have, Mr. Forish. It's something that's not done in just a...
I completely understand.
And I know you want to get it moving, as do several others here. We're not faced with any statute limitations issues, but at this point, what I'm going to say is, and I hate to put a timeframe, but within the next several weeks, I'll have it completed. I actually agree with the follow-up further. I have a system. I get them up on the counter, and that's what I have.
That's fine, I was just asking the question.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? City manager?
My report stands as submitted to council. As always, please ask any questions if you have them. I just want to comment on the Volunteer Fire Company dinner was this past weekend, Huber Hall. It was an excellent event. It's amazing to see that we have some firemen in this town who have served 50, 60, 70 years, and we also achieved the milestone of having our first female firefighter celebrate her 20th year with the company, which is, quite frankly, an unheard of event. As far as we know, there's no record within the Latrobe Volunteer Fire Company of having a female firefighter serve that long, and so we're very proud, and I'm very proud to be there this past Saturday. And then one last thing, I saw we have a young boy scout in the room, and I think of the appropriate mayor, if you would recognize him, say him.
Mrs. Carver, do you want to introduce?
This is Stephen Carver with Troop 304.
Glad to have you here, Stephen.
Just my report, I went to the American Legion Dinner Saturday evening. They're celebrating their 93rd birthday. It was really, it was nice, but I did miss the firemen. I had to go. I don't have anything else, so if you have a vote, motion to adjourn? No one.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion, Mr. Forish. Mrs. Wolfert? All in favor?
Aye.